Good afternoon. I have called to order this September 1st. 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting of Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone here in the Ed Center, please sign with your cell phone and/or electronic devices. Mr. Lindy, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to your honor, for which it stands, to the nation our God, in physical and literary capacity.
Okay. Assistant Treasurer Hughes, please call her over.
Mr. Bates, present. Mr. Bolton, present. Mr. Dowd, present. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Vassar?
Present.
Mr. Vassar? Here.
And a couple of things. A very happy birthday to Ms. Jones. And I know she's actually online. She was in the meeting too. But everybody, please send her happy thoughts today. And also, happy vacation to Ms. Weyer. Some time off once in a while. So with that, Ms. Ammott, please introduce our first presentation. Depp.
Absolutely. We will have our health and safety update from the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon. So I have a short presentation on Vision Zero and Safe Routes to School. Vision Zero is a program that is activated by both the City of Cincinnati and CPS with the intention of eliminating all serious and fatal pedestrian accidents. Now, next Committee of the Whole Meeting, October 6th, we will actually have Melissa McVay, who is the City's Vision Zero Coordinator, come and present and update on all of the city projects related to Vision Zero. What I have provided with you guys tonight is a packet of information, which is the current Vision Zero Safe Routes to School Action Plan. And this is a plan that was developed with the City, CPS, and Ohio Department of Transportation back in May, this past May. And this plan actually led to a grant awarded to the City for infrastructure projects in an amount of $400,000, and to CPS for non-infrastructural projects for $60,000. As well as, according to my information from Ms. McVay, the City is also contributing $750,000 from their own Vision Zero budget for a total of $1.2 million in funding for these projects. I have also included at the back of the packet the most recent requests that were sent to the City recently in response to the metro transportation changes. So that is the end of the presentation for today, but next month we will hear more from Melissa McVay.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Just a, I think this great list goes along with it. You said the board's resolution some back in 19. And then also, the first interest that everybody had was seven or so years ago when the first one was created, which generated with that partnership, generated with the City, a million dollars of a grant, which we can kind of attribute at least $600,000 that we know was spent in a particular way. So this is, is this an annual thing? Is this a periodic thing? How is this, what's the, what's the future of it? What's the, what's the generation of it?
So this plan is, makes us eligible for the grant for five years. And so that is a five-year plan.
Thank you. And the infrastructure part of it, it would be pretty obvious from what the City can do, which we cannot do. What is the non-infrastructural kind of monies? How do we spend that?
Sure. So the non-infrastructural part of the program is education and awareness. So assembly leaves in the school in combination with walk to school events and in combination with our crossing guards is what we were planning was a non-infrastructural program.
So that $60,000 or whatever we can spend on the educational piece, I know Mrs. Bates particularly last year was very involved with that. But we wouldn't necessarily be using the $60,000 from that grant to pay for the additional crossing guards.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question? So, you know, a couple, so I'll get more detail from the City side. And then I'm trying to kind of determine what is our side. But there's obviously lots of good things in here. A couple of things that were, that I saw was related to, you know, some of the things that we were engaging some of our students into. And I love the walking audits.
Yes.
That Western Health.
Yes, it was.
Do we have, like, is the goal that we'll have, or have we done already kind of baseline assessment of kind of, and vision, like all of our schools? How many crosswalks did we deem optimal? How many do we have and what's the gap? Are there sidewalk issues? Yes or no? Do we believe that E or flashing lights or anything has been managed? Yes or no, or still to be? Do we have some sort of inventory like that?
Yes, we do. And some of that is provided in the packet. And as well as in this action plan, there's a very robust analysis that was done on the areas surrounding our schools. Then include things like how many accidents have been in the past? What are the roadway conditions, for example, multilane, high speed, high traffic, makes the area a riskier area for accidents? So there was a lot of criteria that went into that analysis, which ended up hanging out to a prioritization scale to help make decisions about where to spend the funds.
Okay. Because I think that was at least some of the interest of how the City could engage with us for last Monday's meeting or this Monday. And one of the follow-ups I received was, do we have a list that we could share of the wish list, if you will? So.
We have the original wish list, and now we have an additional wish list.
Great. Great. Perfect. Mr. Dowd.
Yes, thank you. From Oliver. And Mr. Bolton answered our ask and answered what I was going to ask about aligning this with current crossing guards. So I see that this, have we already developed the seven to twelve pilot? Is it already in effect or is that common?
For student crossing guards?
Yes.
We do not have that prepared yet.
Okay, so. All right, well, we can't cross, but I was going to say there's something we can, because it's not developed. Because we align in some type of way with some things at our high school? Because it's not, because it's going to be a part of the conversation.
The point, sure, that could be part of the infrastructure work.
Thank you. Great. Ms. Bates?
Yes. In our Health and Safety Committee meeting last week, we had a discussion with our Governmental Affairs Liaison, Senator Eric Turney. And one of his assignments was to facilitate a meeting or continued meetings between CPS and SORDA. Correct. Okay, so you were at that meeting as well. But you talked about our request being part of a wish list. I think that if we make that a stronger, stronger than a wish list, but really a demand, SORDA is as entrenched as they are in not providing the appropriate transportation for our children, then we should be demanding that the City protect our children by putting the appropriate safeguards and traffic control safeguards in place. So I would make the correction that these aren't, this isn't a wish list, these are demands. And as we meet with SORDA, that if SORDA cannot provide appropriate transportation, they should equally be making these demands of the City. The City did get funding from the federal government, and I'm sure that this is covered. So I would, the board of the board, make this a much stronger demand than this was expressed.
Mar.
Along those lines, and this may come up in a presentation I'll take later, it's not a hard, but worth, but along those lines with Miss Bates, because I'm aligned with Miss Bates on this one. Have any of our students been hit by cars this year? Have any of our students been personally impacted by this decision, do we know?
We have one report of a pedestrian incident of a student that we are investigating and documenting now. If you could show that with you in a format.
Yeah, with us.
It does not appear to be related to the metro change at this point in time. We're still investigating.
But still safety concerns over pedestrians?
Yes.
So I think again, you know, I think wish list might not be the appropriate term. We've had an epidemic, our kids getting hit. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Mr. Bolton?
Yeah, I think, I think Miss Bates is correct. And I too anticipate getting, whatever report that is, if the DRO or kids has been hit and, and why we're conducting an investigation. But that's why I asked about the original Safe Routes or whatever. That was seven or eight years ago. It was a million dollar grant. People worked hard on it. $600,000 was spent. I think the public has to know that the state law does not require those kinds of safety features for infrastructure around high schools that they require for elevens. And this board and four or five board iterations before have been asking for that kind of safety infrastructure of the City for that many years. And we've also been asking too, as we are so dependent, rightfully so, and wonderful people that are crossing guards, that we are paying for them, that they, we really think very hard about those crossing guards also being our employees, controlled by us. And I think one of the better things that happened in Monday's meeting that Mr. Vassar referenced was the fact that the, there is a move, and obviously a majority of City Council is now determined that they want the crossing guards to now be paid $15 an hour. They haven't had a raise in eight years or more than that, much more than that. And there did seem to be some support for it. But this whole thing, even though we've had this great partnership about getting these, this work together and prioritizing, I think the City needs to really come forward. And I would base on saying that SORDA needs to be fully aware of what they're really asking of us and our families. And under circumstances where there is not the kind of infrastructure for safety already built in for our teenagers. So thank you for bringing this, because I'm a big, big fan of this. Even if we've done what we asked and worked on seven, eight years ago, even if that were there, the infrastructure around at least several of our high schools, I think more, would be much more secure. So that's all part of people willing to kind of kick in.
Good. Dowd.
Yeah, if there's any clarification from Oliver and attendance to the priorities you mentioned, the priorities, are these correlated with the information that was sent to email regarding the, from the meeting, I guess, that was on yesterday? The schools, the crossing guards needed areas, are these correlated together?
No, that analysis was done before we can change with Metro. So that, those prioritizations were based on factors such as the streets, or the school, as well as how many prior crashes or accidents.
Is there any room that the grant going forward to readjust anything in this?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we can try to make alignment of that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, any further questions? Thank you for that update. And we'll look forward to the continued conversation with Mel from the City. All right. Superintendent?
Yes, now it's time for our presentation update. We'll call it that. Robert Coyne and Sarah Johnson Oliver will be giving presentations.
Okay, so presentation number two. I do want to share some updates about our transportation system in general and as well some updates on Metro. As well as Dan Coyne will be sharing information about our transportation policy. So to start off with, this is our on-time performance for the first 10 days of school. The orange line is percentage of buses that were on time within 15 minutes. The blue line is percentage of buses that were 15 minutes. So you can see, we have been improving since the first day of school, right about, as of today, 89% within 15 minutes and 75% within 15 minutes. Our goal is 90% on time in 15 minutes. So we are not meeting that goal. The gray line is interesting. That is last year, first 10 days of school, which was actually October, if you remember, last fall. And so we have improved over that from 66% on the 10th day to 75%. So it is improving over last year, but not meeting goal. For customer service, this is our data on the transportation call center. We did have a peak of about 2,400 calls on day. And you can notice the inverse relationship, of course, to the number of calls we're getting versus the percentage of calls that can be answered. When the, when the calls go up, then the percent answer goes down. Our goal on this, again, is 90%. So again, we are not meeting the goal in this area right now. We did successfully reduce the number of calls in the first week of school of the last year by 22%. And we believe that is due to increased technology use, recognizing and utilizing our technology tools for help, as well as more proactive communication and fewer late buses. Well, those lead to fewer calls, which leads to more calls can be answered. An additional circumstance with this process is enrollments are still coming in very fast and furious at this point in the year. It's hundreds per day. As well as, and that's for CPS schools, as well as charter and private schools. And so those new transportation requests that are coming in do contribute to, you know, the customer experience and our ability to keep up with all of the new requests. As soon as that's stabilized, we definitely expect the call volume to stabilize. This is our number of service tickets that are generated from those calls in the reason category. So 35% are calling service information, meaning what time is my drop off or pickup? And 33% are new transportation service requests. So again, we are having a high volume of service requests coming in right now from charter and non-public enrollments, and we are processing those as fast. So for Metro, a quick update from this week. Board members and Superintendent Ammott presented to the City Budget Finance Committee on Monday, writing an update on a service and requesting return and the plan for recruiting drivers. We sent over additional information that was requested by the member. And we are intending to send out another parent survey on Monday to gather the updated student experience. So we were asked to be able to provide regular data on how this transition is going. We do hot off the press have some initial ridership data from Metro. And so you can see that we have, in the morning, in the morning time, we have about 2,400 students that were long riding Metro with their passes. And in the afternoon, about the same, about 2,400 students riding on the Metro route with their passes. Attendance, we have some attendance data. So our current attendance rate for students in K-12 or 7, 8, there are 712 buildings, is 77.8%. And what we have to compare it to is actually the 2018, 19 school year, but that is a year-to-date cumulative, which is 80. And then we are still working with the Metro team to give the additional data that was requested, which is the distribution of the trip links for students, the distribution of the walk links, and the time to departure after school dismissal. And so that team is working on that. So the Office of Communication Engagement captured specific concerns from our families, and these were shared with Metro last Friday. We had 760 responses. Over half of those were from Walnut Hills High School. This is the responses by zip code of 45211 and 45266. As well as by grade level. So we have more responses from the younger grade level, 7th and 8th grade. Have you experienced challenges? 97% said yes. Majority of those are recurring issues that were reported. And the top issues that were reported on this form were long wait in the afternoon and long commute in the afternoon. And then followed by long commute in the morning and then pay or drop off. Were the most common responses on the student experience form. So looking ahead for transportation, we're going to continue to build out the Metro data dashboard with the metrics that were requested. We are completing the yellow bus analysis. That was an assignment as far as future options, both for 7, 8, and instead of 12 students. We do, are still working to issue, be able to issue yellow bus for next school year. And we'll continue the on-time performance QI project and the call center project. We are working on addressing, as with all organizations and lots of departments here, addressing our vacancies that we have on the transportation team and really trying to recruit and fill those so that the work can continue. As well as adding additional leadership resources to the team, which I would like to introduce Lenee Spooklaw, former principal and former HR evaluation manager for CPS, and Doug Plummer, who is from OSBA as a transportation consultant, who is working on us. And now I will turn it over to Dan.
Thank you. At the Policy Committee meeting last week, I was asked to give a summary of the two board policies that relate to transportation. That is 8600.01, which relates to supervision of transported students. In this policy, the quote, "primary consideration of transporting students" is their safety. And then this policy also discusses the responsibilities of parents to ensure that their kids are safe before they get on. Board policy 8600.02 relates more to statistics, including who is eligible for transportation within the district and how transportation services are divided. That policy provides, I'm quoting, "The district will determine the safest, least restrictive, viable method of service available by international students." It goes on to say, "We're practical," or, excuse me, "we're practical. Transportation shall meet the following objectives, including the yellow bus student's ride time shall be 75 minutes one way, no more than 75 minutes one way. School day starting times and dismissal times shall be such as to accommodate two routes per bus." Talk about double routing buses. "Transportation vehicles shall arrive in the park within 15 minutes of the start and completion of the school program. Yellow bus stop shall be within a half a mile of a resident. For it to be a public transit, vehicles will access the nearest public transit stops established by the public." Those are the policies that the board has that relate specifically to transportation. I'd like to answer your questions.
Questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And I appreciate you sharing the two policies. I'm of the opinion that we've been put in a position of not being able to apply by our own policies. I do think we've increased the risk to our students, but if everybody can read policies and figure out what they think is correct or right, if that's my position. I have a question. This is the fifth year of the Metro Agreement?
Yeah.
And every year, we do some sort of addendum?
Yeah.
Have we done the addendum for the year that we're living now? And who approves that addendum? Is an addendum like a contract?
Yes, so we have, I've had one discussion with my child watching addendum. Mary's been sending me a draft for our review and discussion. I believe it does have to go through a contract approval.
Yeah, I believe we usually get approval of the board for questions.
Good. And then, can I ask a question about the dollars? Or not the dollars, but what the number of passes? These were just, first of all, the on-time, is that our measurement or is that Metro? Well, that was yellow. That had nothing. On-time had nothing. Oh, good. I was thinking I was like living in some other universe on Astor Place. But I was excited. Wow. Okay, that was yellow. Losing it. Okay, good. But then let me ask this. 2,400 passes were used on a daily basis? So Metro, those are Metro. And they're a little machine of a count if it's our kids or our passes. Are we saying on a daily basis, only 2,400 of our kids are getting on Metro?
Yeah.
Wow. And our attendance is pretty good? Thank you, families. Thank you, families, because that's, that's a low. We need some context. Will you guys share some of this stuff? We need some context. I'm, I'm, thank you.
No, I was probably the same question as being able to average before this time of year with National Defense.
I mean, not pre-COVID, and it was about 4,000 in the morning, 5,000 in the afternoon.
Kids aren't getting that big enough.
Do you have a question?
I'm still stuck on the fact that half as many kids are running. I see. I do have a couple. Would he have almost finished that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to say, first of all, just thank you again for all of your hard work trying to manage the situation that we asked for and trying to do your best and our best with it. And I truly deeply believe that everybody who's on the CPS team is trying to do their best with it. And I want to just say thank you. I also think that the, I haven't seen the data before on things like on-time buses and calls answered. And just found it very clear and very compelling. I think it's so great that we have that, it's so great that we have goals around that, it's so great using it. I do want to ask, like, what would it take to get 100% passing? Because is that what we're executing?
Yeah, so if we go back to the reasons, like who are calling and that's how we're putting together the plan. So having 35% of our calls are just pickup and drop off, we really want that to be a technology dual usage. So that would cut the number of calls by three. Also, earlier enrollments will help us tremendously.
Do we need to hire more people to answer them?
That is a possibility as well. We did a significant staff analysis. However, the, the measure was, you know, the first quarter. It wasn't the first week of school. So we're staffed for what we believe is correct for the first quarter. It's just that this first week or two is a heavy crutch for one thing because of new enrollment, for two, because of new drops.
You're closer to this and know much more about it than I edge you to offer. I would certainly be supportive of more money for that. I bet that it would be helpful to make things easier for parents. I think I also wanted to say thank you for including the follow-up on my. I really, really appreciate that. Those are going to come from Metro, is that the idea?
Yes.
Do we know when they're going to have those for us?
So we met with them today. They're going to go back and work on it, and they said. They're going to go back and work on it, and they said they did them in a week. So I'm not sure if that means the data will be complete in a week, or I'll, they'll have more questions, but about a week.
When did they say that?
Today.
I think, I don't know if I'll put it literally, I would hope to know as soon as possible whether one may have those numbers for us, and we probably will have an update in a week. I think it's a pretty, I just don't want to give a kid number. People disagree about that, am I crazy? No, okay. And then I was going to say, two last things, and I'll almost be quick. I think on those data, I'm less concerned with those, much more concerned with the idea behind them. And I think the idea behind them is just, can we look at what the student experience feels like this year with some sense of what the distribution looks like and compare that to what we used to look? Those were three ideas for data that would get us to that direction, but they or you or others have a better way to get at that question. I think that that's the important.
I think the distribution data is a good way of getting it, because Metro has shared that the average ride time decreased from 55 minutes on a national service to 45 minutes. But I think seeing the distribution would be also very eye-opening.
Yeah, that's great. And just from at least my perspective, we get these emails or texts or concerns to people, and even all of them, I think, feel so compelling. It's just hard to know, like, is this an outlier or is this part of the trend? And then last thing, I just, I wanted to try to find some way to move forward some of the things I'm hearing and questions I'm getting from parents. And so what I was hoping I could do is just lay out a couple of questions I've been getting and ask that maybe in the next board meeting, could you all share with us? Or you could even do it with an M O P on a table. Either way, I'm just, are these things people have already tried and thought about? Are there things we've asked Metro for, Metro has said no? But they're just, these are the kind of questions I was getting. And there are things like, you know, is it possible to have buses waiting for kids? It's impossible to send multiple buses at once. Who's responsible for kids while they wait for the bus after school is over? Students who work after school used to be able to get to a job by a certain time. How many kids are there who now can't get to the jobs on time? And then I think the last one is like, what's the, what's the backstop that this does give? Like, if we're in the same place in six weeks or something? What's the plan? Thank you.
Okay, so if 2,300 kids are riding this year and 4,000 kids were riding last year, isn't our $8 million budget going to $5 million?
It's a great question.
Yeah, and we're hitting them in the pop book, you know? I mean, certainly can't pay them the same amount of money and have them blow us off.
We both can. We'll have a savings because of the regular cars are less expensive than the extra cars. And if you are riding, that will be a significant saving.
Like significant by three or $4 million? And do they know that?
They know they're in the lobby.
They all need our money. Yeah, they got the lobby.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. There's so many things. I try to, I try to make sense of my thoughts on my paper that sometimes, and I look at it, it gets to me a long way. So give it a shot. I like something Mr. Lindy said about the meaning behind, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse or sound like a priest and choir, but I couldn't be more grateful for how hard y'all are working to make this work. And, you know, I also really appreciate, I need to say, you taking all of our questions, calling up on it, because in a perfect world, I would just assume that people at Metro are being overworked with their questions here because it's their fault. And when it comes to the meaning behind the numbers, the student experience is very important to me, too, to talk about the last meeting. And so kids, and saying, Metro's saying that students are getting into school on time more quickly is not meaningful to me, because we're talking about half of the population that we were talking about first. We're also, we've also destroyed Healthy Schools dot com, which was really, really important. At least I know to some members of the board, and then ultimately the full board, and we voted on it because it's good for adolescent kids. And now our kids are getting up even earlier and getting less sleep because of Metro. And that does really, really upset me. And so again, the meaning behind the numbers, again, just to keep quoting Mr. Lindy, I think that that's a really important thing for me as well. The one question, and I'll just be a broken record about this every opportunity I get, whether it's here or elsewhere, is somebody at Metro needs to tell us so we don't keep going around in circles, whether or not this is a plan that is forever or that the routes can come back, because we've heard in media from their own communications director, the routes can come back. I hear communities from people who are close to Metro, the routes aren't coming back. I don't know who to trust, because nobody with decision-making power at Metro has ever said it one way. Somebody needs to tell us if these routes can come back, and if they can, they need to tell us when, because we have the budgets in this space for it. And we're not going to pay the $8 million. Pay them $4 million, maybe, but then we need to, if they're not going to come back, we need to figure it out. If they are going to come back, we need to find them. And then lastly, I think lastly probably, is two things really. So I hesitate to even say this, because I don't want, I don't want, I really don't. I'm curious, with the 2,400, you know, checks, we know Metro can count who our kids are through the machines. Can they? I guess this is a yes or no. Can they also tell, or do they also know where those kids are going to school? Can they get that granular with it?
Yes.
They can?
That might should look by school.
Okay, so could we see then, could we somehow, relatively easily, if they're able to pull those numbers quick, like where the kids are getting to school? Because my assumption is either A, there, and I don't like to assume too many things, but there are families that can get the kids to school. I think it's a fair assumption, whether they have a car or not. I think it's also probably fair to assume it's A hardship on top of hardship on top of hardship for a lot of families to, to get their kids to school, when we, and I hate to admit this out loud, and Miss Bolden already did it, so I won't blame her. We, in my, it's my opinion, as policy chair, we're also violating. They have forced us to violate. So if we can get those numbers on who, like where, like, so if there's 5,000 after school, 2,400 now, or whatever it was, which kids are getting to school through the bus and which students to which schools are not through the bus? And then my last statement would be, I know we talked about, you know, at the Metro, and they can change routes whenever they want. I also know in a contract, it stipulates that they will provide safe and, I'm not going to contend they're not providing safe. I feel like the Metro buses are safe, I feel, like Metro, but it is not liable. And that 2,400 number, I think, proves that, obviously, that.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden.
Yes, as a follow-up to the addendum question, considering how all of this has transpired from the, from the get-go, June and early July, and the positions that our lead administrators were put in with Metro saying this is the only thing we can do, and then them claiming it's about bus driver shortage, which I'm sure part of it is that. On that Monday meeting, when Mr. Messer and I were there, as well as Superintendent, by the end of that meeting, the Chair of the SORDA Board said that, no, he was not interested in overhauling. He just said it clear. And you have Republican and Democratic Council members together figuring it out that Metro is now saying, no, actually, we're going to keep this. That's what they were saying in public session. We sat here, we heard it. It took question after question from Democrat and Republican to get them to finally say it. My point is this, that being the case, this addendum that you're working on had better reflect the board's resolution that we want the routes restored. Because what, what Metro has done is you all working so hard to keep our children safe and our teenagers there. That collaboration, which has to be there, I know the work and the effort. They have taken it to the public like we are in this. You know, they're even still saying this is a CPS plan. So my issue is the addendum better reflect that we want our routes restored, and if they're not going to be restored, we sure as heck don't want this or any. There has to be a better way. And I think there's support for a better way among the people that appoint the SORDA Board. And I think that this is something where the administration of Metro should not be having that kind of power over our families or these institutions. It's unacceptable. How many people is that? 11 people? At Metro deciding the wellbeing of our families and our kids after we've had a partnership for decades? Who the heck do they think they are? They're a public vendor, publicly supported by tax dollars. So the addendum better reflect what we still believe and what our Superintendent said, almost as the, you know, the final comment or statement, is that we want the routes restored. Don't you waste time looping this so round? Heck, yes. Heck, yes, because this would not be.
Ms. Powers?
Yes. Have any data of any discipline issues at our bus stops, especially at dismissal within our students? And do all of this happen? Do we have any data around that?
No.
Is there any way, and Metro is inspiring, you know, and I'm saying that our kids are positive in all of this, and their behaviors seem to have been outstanding in all of this. Is there any way to positive school culture to maybe have a type of report and send a celebration about how they're adjusting to all of this thing?
Absolutely.
I think that would be key, that they're really talking about this.
They're really being, yeah.
Any other questions?
In our press release, if there is a press release about any of this, we made it clear, which is Metro, which is yellow. Because that on-time thing in the presentation, I didn't get it, issue that it was, you know, it's a whole transportation picture. I think we need to separate that, because that's a very salient issue. And congratulations on Yellow Bus. That's as good as it's been in five years. So thanks, Mike. Yes, please, because that's been, congratulations on that one. I think that's great. Maybe I'll make that, make that clear, and I do want, as soon as possible, that follow-up on the student service.
Great. I would just like me to make some closing statements. One, first acknowledging all of the people who set up, done and trying hard to ensure that our kids are right to school safely and dismissed. For all of our staff members of CPS, they will be diligent in ensuring the safety of our kids. Our parents also made the decision to support and help. Part of the reason we write a ship is law, and we have traffic issues because parents have made that decision. It is concerning, because we do know that when the kids come to school, we will increase achievement and graduation. We do know it puts a stress on our system and has increased costs for our budget, because we have to pay those people who are helping out to do the work and not complaining about it at all. They worked for it, they should be compensated for it. With that said, as I said on Monday, our position, administration position, is to advocate for our families and students and to be clear in our act, which is to return to extra education. To answer Ms. Marowski's question on SORDA stands, they were very clear that they did not have a plan to restore the routes, and it was based on a bus driver shortage. And if they were able to, it had some strings to it, and it was the bus driver. So also, in my ask on behalf of CPS, I asked for a plan for recruitment for bus drivers. So I just wanted to give that summary. I wanted to acknowledge our CPS staff, who's working very diligently hard to ensure the safety of our, of our kids. And we continue to work towards a resolution. That was also put on the table. We are open to our data, but at this point, school is open. We want to make sure our kids are safe. We are monitoring the data, which we continue to share that data with you and make informed decisions to move forward throughout the year. But thank you for allowing me to add closing comments.
Yeah, I just have one, a couple of questions, actually, and I believe longer, I think, than they even thought it would go on Monday. And I didn't get to hear all of Metro slash SORDA's presentation. I at least know some members of Council signaled that they were interested in hearing from them, their recruiting plans. Did they share anything at all right then when they spoke?
Very likely.
And were they asked about that?
They were. They were pushed for a timeline.
I think that'd be important for us all to hear that, because I think, you know, that's part of the story. You know, and I think maybe this question's for Mr. Coin. You know, they have thrown out their legality to be able to do it. Did they address that? And do we feel we can push them still to do it based on, I, and Mr. Mann asked me if I, you know, asked if I could call somebody at the FTA to find out? I don't remember, because he was curious about that as well. Because if you remove that, then we could go very quickly into, if we go out and do a, help with your recruiting campaign, and maybe we go, you know, like first student that took pictures of, it got on the back of vans, the billboards and a little bit, I haven't seen in the public domain advertising saying, please come drive for Metro. And so, you know, I think that has been very silent on that piece, if that's where we're trying to get, if that's the long haul in the tent. So, you know, I feel like, my, my opinion is, they're using the, well, we can't even provide this anyway, so why would we go about doing that? So why are we going to go recruit? And I think somehow we've got to get at least what we believe is clarity, so we can then in good faith go say, no, this, this is legal, and, you know, publicly, along with Council, ask for a very specific recruitment plan and say, what can we do to help?
To the Superintendent's point, years at the end of the meeting, Chairman Mann said that we would be on the agenda in four weeks again, and they had an expectation that SORDA and CPS, Metro would be conducting an effort to find more solutions, and we're not just talking all of the wonderful heavy lifting that everybody's been doing school by school, but I think they were of the opinion, was a very important questioning, I think, from Jan-Michel, hearing that, that we would convene at a, at a high level, as well as all of our experts. So I think there's an expectation there. And I think there's also an expectation by the Commission, and those two bodies appoint the SORDA. I would just, and one of the action steps was to convene, she referred to it as the committee. And that was board members on both sides, CEO and Superintendent. So that is an action step that we had listed, and originally, it was a determining step that needed that, so we are going to follow that to make sure that we get that after they come.
And then one thing that I kind of, I talked to Ms. Bolden about, she was like a very cordial policy, and I saw kind of in here that we were looking at those Metro, I mean, the Yellow Bus possibilities. I do like the idea, because they haven't begun recruiting, so let's just face that. So that's, like, they very pushed the, like, when they could actually start here, and we have these issues that we just solved. And I, I think at least an idea, you know, that if they could do the seventh and eighth, and I think we have to broaden a little bit to like, tell us, can you do this? It would take one-third of our students who are riding Metro out. And there's something in my gut that says, of the people who have chosen to drive, like get my guess is, I think there are more seventh grade parents, maybe more eighth grade parents that might dip off. So the faster we can offload those seventh and eighth graders, personally, I feel a lot safer. And I don't know, I haven't, I haven't, you know, as I said in the Metro meeting, people were there. I would never put Lily in at seven years old, her seventh grade, on a bus by herself. Not because I'm not an advocate of public transportation. I just wouldn't do it. But I'd do it when she's the ninth grade, probably. That's a hard thing for me. And when I've seen these parents, and I think we've all gotten those, seventh grader, it hits right here. So the faster we can see if there's something we can do there for the seventh and eighth, A, I think it does offload a lot. And perhaps it takes a third of the traffic away around the schools. Perhaps it takes a third of the parents, you know, who are having the most angst. But I think we have to get that in one minute sooner or later, if that's possible, while we work through these others.
I just would like to add, at the original committee meeting, we came to the table with solutions. And I specifically asked for seventh and eighth graders. And we were told no. By Metro. I specifically asked that...
Oh, I mean by Yellow Bus.
Yes, and we at Yellow Bus as well, they don't have the capacity. I asked Metro to see if they could add just the seventh and eighth graders for extra routes. Sarah Tummel Oliver went and looked at our bridgeers for Yellow Bus and they weren't able to do it. So that was on the table. But I think it's important after these conversations to come back and see what we can do. Because what we're doing right now is better, but it's not as far up here.
Yeah, and then, did we get full clarity? I'm still on this one. I know we're not required for nine through 12. We are obviously for seventh and eighth. And do we feel good that what we're required to do is met by for the seventh and eighth through what we're giving them? You see what I mean?
Yes.
Do we get final clarity, do we feel like that?
Yes, we're not required. We're required to provide information services K to eight. But Metro does satisfy that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Your third presentation is good.
The third, we have two more. It can just our reprocess. And Assistant Superintendent Ashata Murphy will be leading this presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Amari. Good day, everyone.
Good luck.
So I am here today with Ms. Leslie Bryant. Leslie is the manager for our customer care center. And we are bringing to you a presentation about our early monetary application and lottery process for this year. And we want to tell you that we're super passionate about this because board members, we've heard what you've had to say. We've listened to the superintendent as well as our families. And your feedback around this process is so important and so valued that we have created a user-friendly early monetary application process. And so we'll be talking to you about three things briefly. While we're doing this this year, the dates that we're doing it will be a big difference and how our families can apply to our system. Taking into consideration that some people like to use the online system, but others still like to use a paper pencil format. And also what tools this applies to. So, Leslie.
Thank you. That's good to see you, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to share some information with you and to make our families feel a lot happier. We've constantly heard from them, and you're probably curious, why would we create another application process for our families? It's really to give them a earlier opportunity to apply and to ensure that they can get a seat at from Montessori to high school, to a senior Montessori high school. And some of the benefits are early application, early notification. And also it's one less thing to have to worry about in these kinds of sessions. Who should apply? So this application is for our currently enrolled in district grade six CPS Montessori students. And so that's a lot to think about. But this is truly about the students that we are serving in district residence attending our schools in grades two. We have six CPS elementary Montessori schools. And we also want to ensure that our students who transferred from a Montessori school to CBA for pandemic reasons will also be able to apply during their application. When should they apply? Again, this is much earlier. In years past, the application for Montessori, for the application for Magnet didn't happen until December. Notification didn't happen until usually right around, right after President's Day. And now here we are, able to accept applications beginning in a few weeks, September 21st. The application will close October 21st. And families will receive notification by November 30th. Another option for us to ensure that our families know things a lot sooner. There isn't a whole lot of paperwork around us. If someone wants to pay the application, they'll be able to do it right to online, stop at a school and wait to... How can they apply? So again, they give you information from our CPS website. You can download, print and submit their application. You can email the application to us. We've done something as simple as taking a picture with their cell phone and texting it in or emailing it, I'm sorry, to our CPS help. That email address will take those and make sure they're integrated with the other application. They have the same type of order. You can also stop by our customer care center. We have a mailbox outside, they don't want to come in the lobby. They can also visit Clark or Gamble High School. What's next? What can we do next? How can they mount that status and mount that application? So once you submit the application, you need to come right around the road to there. Families can begin to log into Power School. They can check their email. They can check their mailbox, we'll be sending them status letters. They can also email or call the customer care center, Clark or Gamble. Through this process, the children are automatically enrolled through a lottery to either Clark or Gamble High School. If they decide that they don't want to sit that seat, they have until December 17th to opt out. If there's something that they are really just curious about, that's again, they can go to Paul. There's some demographic affirmation, it's like, you submit your application September. But all of a sudden I have a new phone number, or immediately I sort of move. You can have that all that information online right there. This is the lottery schedule for the other, the schedule for the other applications and lotteries at CPS projects. So the lottery application we're talking about right now is our CPS fully Montessori application, then September 21st. We also have a CPS sibling application. Traditionally a paper application that is done at the elementary magnet. We also have a new this year. The lottery period is longer and it actually encompasses three lotteries. We have Magnet Lottery, High School Lottery and Heart Neighborhood. This allows families a lot more time to make a decision about which school best needs to be. That happens September 7th. It will close March 1st. Notification for those usually is about five or six weeks. And then we have our East West application, which is a paper application. And it's going to happen, we will swap them, we'll close equal February 21st. And as always, we have our Walnut application from the first roommate. And I think then our presentation, our parents can answer questions if you have any.
Board member, is there any questions? Ms. Bates?
Does the September 21st through the October 29th ban, will parents know if their students have passed the Walnut test and Spencer test within that timeframe?
They will not. Now, this application is just for Montessori students.
But a lot of Montessori students go to Spencer and Walnut. So they'll be double rolling and taking up space. And I think that's going to cause discomfort because there's not enough room for even our Montessori students in our Montessori schools.
But one thing that might help that, board member Bates, is remember Leslie mentioned an opt-out period in December, which will still be a lot earlier than we would have a finalized Montessori listing. But we understand that some of those sixth graders may choose Walnut or SCBA or another CPS school for that matter. So it'll at least give us a better idea in an earlier timeframe.
And it'll also give them, if they don't get in, the opportunity to look outside of our district instead of waiting to see who opts out. That's a concern I would have.
We are planning, and we have a little bit more work to do in this area to make sure we do the very best we can that any sixth grade Montessori student somehow be able to get a Montessori seat. We are working on that. We understand that it's been an issue over the past several years. It is a part of our plan and our process. But we wanted to get these dates and the early information about the plan to put some thought in.
So we are considering opening classrooms to accommodate our sixth graders.
We have taken a look at the number of students that we have for sixth grade Montessori students and know that there's some... But we also know that some of those sixth graders may not choose Gamble or Clark.
They just may not know that they have the option if their test scores aren't there or the auditions aren't there for the other schools. That's the concern I have.
Yes, ma'am. So our plan following today's meeting for feedback is and what guides us to do. We already have on the calendar tomorrow to meet with two of our DSLs and to meet with people out of Christmas shop, Elise Jenkins. Elise is working on the marketing plan, we're ready to go either direction. And then the DSL, two DSLs, DSL Blaze. And that line, DSL line, they are ready and prepared to meet with us to talk about what those next steps are so that we can communicate exactly.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. And this, this only pertains to Montessori.
Right, with the exception of the dates on the last, that happened to the last.
Okay, and the second to the last, I thought I heard like Magnet. So there is an application period, there are two per Magnet. So there's elementary Magnet application, which happens December 7th, and that's our normal Magnet. And then you have an East West application, which happened also about for elementary.
The reason I'm trying to focus on this is that there's, I know we've talked about it in finance, three of us particularly, and we brought it to the board. There is a reason to expedite some of our discussion regarding growth. And Mr. Mesut particularly pointed that out a couple of weeks ago about some of the complaints, even about the bus, was like, well, wait a minute, it gets clear on the other side of town. We have to decide if some of our Magnets are still going to be Magnets or are they going to be neighborhood schools? That's all part of the growth piece. We kind of have to decide, are we enforcing the East and West? Meaning if you're like Arlo family, the Arlo people at Parker Woods, if they decide to go, they have to go to Gamble. There's not a choice about going to Clark. At least that's what we have been trying to practice and why we invested the fortune at Mercy, Gamble. So there has, we can't, these dates are really important from a point of family knowing and us providing the classrooms as well as us deciding how are we going to organize the district geographically and programmatically. So then we have to really talk about this. So I appreciate the earliness of this presentation. I really appreciate that. Because usually when we hear this, it's still need to do anything about it. And there's so many decisions that need to be made. So yeah, thank you.
We got big decisions that we need to make and move on.
Bates, Senator Amari, regarding the December 7th and December 17th dates, which I thought was a long point because I was going to make a point about that. And Ms. Bolton mentioned the, I guess, the encouragement of the Parker Woods, the Dater and the Gamble Elementary. Are we streamlining, streamlining those parents to Gamble to prevent the cross...
It's part of our marketing plan.
Okay. Because I think that that is, I mean, that's the whole point of having a power with curriculum mirroring each other on each side of the district. So I was just wondering if that was part of the conversation.
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, and for Gamble, I know that in the years past, there's been kind of like openings for those who did not have Montessori experience. Are we cutting that off this upcoming year?
Based on what we know about the numbers, we won't be able to continue.
Okay.
I just need clarity. Are we saying as a board, you wish for administration to have clear acceptance for East and West for any Montessori student applying to Clark and Gamble? Because at this point, we have been following what has been done historically. So we just went through the lottery process. What we did was, if that's what happened at Gamble, because the Montessori was in the pool with others, then the non-Montessori kids received those seats. That's why we pushed up the date to ensure that every Montessori elementary student has an option at Clark or Gamble. Now I'm hearing, I just want to be sure, so our administration can move forward with procedures. So am I hearing that the board, it's the will of the board to have clear East and West for Montessori?
That's a lot of...
Yes, okay.
I thought that was what you were doing.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, group. With the marketing campaign of people. So people knows, because in the past, Gamble wasn't here at Montessori because there were so many students that didn't come from Montessori. And so we're moving Gamble into the same, you know, same curriculum, same level as Clark. And that may also require some shifting of staff too, like we do in the elementaries.
We can do that. Thank you for the clarity.
Ms. Julie?
I just wanted to go right to show, I have spent less time thinking about this issue than I think the other people who are here. I'm not quite ready to say I'm 100% on board with that. I don't want to say like, I think it's a terrible thing we shouldn't do. I just, I'm not necessarily on that. So just for future reference, I'm holding out a little bit, but it sounds like the majority of people is...
So we will move forward. We will have a campaign. We will get the information out. And we will set up our process to ensure last decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to, do you have some...
I was just going to say, part of that was the transition from what Gamble was. And people had such good feelings about this culture at Gamble. And they wanted to keep it so inclusive and special. But we've gone through that transition now. I mean, we've spent fortune. And that's the reality to the space's third high school eventually. I'm not close now.
So as it relates to this, I have to say, as soon as you started talking about this Montessori, the first thing that went in my head was, is this the first step towards this broader look at how we manage choice and offerings and the whole bit? I think some of the, so I think I'm there with at least a lot of people that I think it's an opportunity to look at that. I do think it is a change for some people. And, you know, I think we probably, you know, maybe, I don't know if we could do an assessment, have some public input or whatever, where we could show what that would look like. Because we have a mixture of Montessori, neighborhood schools. And I still don't understand like why Pleasant Ridge Montessori is a neighborhood school and North Avondale Montessori is Magnet. And people who live next door to, there's story of somebody who lives right next door to North Avondale can't go there. And so somehow to look at that offering, say, are there enough seats on the East for students who would come? Are there enough seats for the West? And then what would that look like? Would it change maybe one being a neighborhood or not being a neighborhood? Some changes there. I think the high schools, that's been addressed. But is, I think it'd be great for the administration to come back and tell us what that could look like. Is there parity in the number of elementary seats? Where are the gaps and where are the opportunities? Because I think it would definitely be a change that the community obviously might want to have some visibility and some questions and all those things. I remember that's something we could do at one of our fast coming meetings. But my gut tells me this is a great time to look at that, given the rise. And I think then it calls out some of the additional needs. Because if we were at the number that you communicated and we're growing at the hundreds... and we're growing at the hundreds per day, wonderful. A chunk of those have to be people coming into the Montessori club.
I would also say, Mr. Chair, that if you're urging, the finance committee is like removing much of its work plan to focus on.
To get off to some of this stuff, yeah. Great, this is exciting. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I ask one more? Sorry, one more. I know there were two issues just in our school community over the past three years. One where people, no one was accepted, everybody ended up on a waiting list. And then one, what I heard from some of the staff was whoever the secretary spent there and which got to communicate. So people accepted other places because they didn't know they'd been accepted. Do you know anything about that?
I can speak to some of that. We were really conservative in the seating people so the waiting list was, so that maybe nature to not go for seat getting buildings and that allowed the, allowed schools to pull in people in the correct order. That's what I was.
Say it again.
So we were very conservative in awarding lottery seats, so the waiting list was long. So that maybe you pull students in in the correct order. So that would be the overseat getting school. That was the first issue. The second issue regarding maybe everything registrations or accepted, people were accepted.
Yeah, this just happened to be in North Avondale. So I assumed that if there had been these issues at our school, I'm sure it's happened in other places. I was told that it was a mistake and that nobody had been accepted. And then, and they went back and I know their people got like, their apologies and all that. And they said, well, what happened? Since we were talking about the lottery, this quality check, that one I think had something to do with the lottery. The other one was that somebody at the school staff forgot to notify people. So people accepted other schools that were their second choice because they thought they weren't accepted there. That was like two or three years ago. And then this other one was this past year. Yeah, this other was this past year, like the current school year, sorry.
The letters that my presence come from.
They come from the district.
They come all the way to school level.
But there's something, but that was the one for three years ago, that this came from a staff. She said it was something that had not been sent out by whoever. I'll get the details later because I know who gave you that. But this last one, I do know, you know, and Laura spoke to it very quickly, but maybe you can find out exactly what happened there. Just for a quality check. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last and final.
Yes, I am pleased to say we are on schedule. I was a little nervous. It's a little presentation and this is the last presentation for the afternoon. And I just wanted to really give the board and the public a heads up. I received an urban call from OBE about a report that will be released. You can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. And basically, this report is really going to talk about the impact of the pandemic. But I thought it was important to open this presentation about our core business. We are here to educate students. Our vision stays CPS to be a community that ensures equitable access to world-class education unleashing the potential of every student. So all of the things that we discussed today, whether it's lottery, whether it's transportation, health and safety, those are conditioned. But those are not, that is not the core business of what we do. We educate students. And I want to, as the interim superintendent, keep that in the forefront of why we do what we do and what is our long start. And it's to our mission to prepare students for life. So this report, next slide please, will give us data to help us move forward. So again, I received a call and we had a meeting with OBE. This report is different than a report card. This report will discuss three things. Chronic absenteeism, student participation on state assessment, and student achievement on these state assessments. The data is showing and highlighting that urban schools were disproportionately impacted. And then these goals listed here are straight from OBE. This report will help policymakers, community, organizations, organizers have a better understanding of the impact of a pandemic. Encourage policymakers and educators to use all resources available to address the challenge. So the next few slides, I'm going to give you a sneak peek of what the data is showing us and some pre-COVID data. So for chronic absenteeism, in 2018, 2019, of course with absenteeism, we want that percentage to be low. So 2018, 2019, it was at 37%. COVID 2021, it went up 46.4% chronic absenteeism. However, we are lower than the urban eight average. Now to give you some context, chronic absenteeism only includes enrolled students and it includes excused or unexcused absences, which equates to about 18 days. So we're going to remind the board of last year, when we quarantined, we quarantined automatically for 10 days. So that is going to really have an impact on our chronic absenteeism data. The state average, although we did that, the state average saw an increase in the chronic absenteeism about 7%. We were about 9% and lower than a urban eight. Next slide please. So what are we doing? Last year, we required quarantine at home. This year mirrors updated guidance. It allows asymptomatic students to quarantine at school in the classroom and in town school. So we believe this will see an increase, a decrease, I should say, in our chronic absenteeism. We also hired more social workers. We have now on staff 71.5. Those social workers write plans, individual attendance. They meet with families, conduct home visits, and make referrals to help reduce barriers for our families. We also have 19 attendance support specialists and they are trained to support and help at the school. They also make contact and follow the consistency with the state guide. Next slide please. Now I'm going to move on to academic data and participation. To give a little context, we prioritize participation. We wanted the students to take the assessment. But I wanted to share this, to second bullet here, remember, we did all models last year from remote, this is blended and in person. So on that third grade full test in October, we shifted from distance to blended learning. So kids were in school probably about two days in person before taking that test. In the spring, we shifted from blended learning. So they were coming roughly two and a half days a week or right before the test, five days in person. So there was shift in how we delivered instruction. And I just want to make note here, we have not received model data from OBE. So this is considered preliminary. This is what we have, but I wanted you to be well informed. Next stat, slide please. So this is the participation here. So in 2017 and 2018 was pre-pandemic. So we roughly had about 97% and 98% of our kids taking the assessment phase seven. This year, it is around 83% for math and 85% for ELA. So we did see a drop in participation and it was aligned to our attendance rate was about 85%. So that matched with us. Again, it was a priority for us to assess the students that were here. Now I want to performance that, achievement that. This is third grade ELA. So there you have in 2017, about 60% were proficient. 2018 to 2019, 66. So we were making growth. And if I would have pulled back from 2015, 2016, you would see years of increase in our third grade achievements core. During the pandemic, you see that tremendous drop to 33.1%. We know that teachers matter, in-person learning matters. So that's what that slide is showing with you. For our fifth through eighth grade students, again, 2018, for fifth grade, 53%, 53% in 2019, and then a drop to 39%. So you can see those numbers for yourself here that in that last year in 2021, we did see a de- decrease in our ELA proficiency scores. In math, the same thing, with the exception of that purple line. So those of you who have been around, in 2018, 2018, our eighth grade students were in algebra, very different than the rest of the state. Then we switched back and said, you know what, they have to have those solid foundational skills. So that's why it went up. Because more students in 2019 were at grade level, eighth grade math on that purple slide. And then you see it declining during the pandemic. Next slide please. In the course of math, this was interesting here. So I started off with our younger learners here for algebra, English, and geometry in 18, 2019. Those were the scores. It slightly increased in 2021. They're older, they understand the use of the technology. So not as much different than our younger learners. So what is CPS doing about this academic gap? Again, this is our core business. We take this seriously and we are going to accelerate learning. We started with this in June with academics and their original program. And we know how important it is for the social emotional health of our students to connect with each other, connect with teachers and the adults in the classroom. So we will continue that. The must-have for teachers and principals that we are very clear with, there are four things here. You have to build the relationships. We have to do the two-week cycle assessment. We have to know where our kids are so we can respond quickly and put improvements in place. And the other thing that I will be stressing with our curriculum department, so sometimes this is very depressing, but I believe that we need to plan joyful lessons. Learning is fun. Learning is great, even when you have to catch up. And that data will show us where they need to be so we can do real-time acceleration. We will continue to use Schoology. And so some of those learning outcomes, materials, and assignments will be there. So if we have to quarantine and students are at home, they can access Schoology and continue to do those assignments. And then we're going to have our reoccurring database. As far as established support, this is systemic. This is standard practice. This is not something that we just kind of tuck in the air. This is best practice. We are building professional learning community through our academic matrix. In that academic matrix, it's principals sharing their data, the two-week cycle assessment. We have data coaches who will have those reports readily available to them. And then we will take a problem of practice. We will look and find patterns in that data and talk together and problem solve of how can we increase achievement. In those academic meetings, which is facilitated by our directors of school leadership, it's also departments. So student services will be here. A positive school culture will be there. A curriculum department will be there. So it's on-time support. So if a principal says, hey, I need textbooks. I have more kids coming in. We won't miss a beat. The support is in that room during that academic matrix. We will continue to provide professional development, modeling, and coaching, and the support of our reading and math special. And it's the 80/20 model. 80% is with children, 20% is really supporting teachers on best practices. They are highly trained in that area. So it's all hands on deck. All hands on deck. It's going to take everyone, everyone to ensure that we address unfinished learning. So when we get this, this report, we will use it. And we already know it's going to confirm already what we know. I don't think I shared any new. We just have numbers to go behind it. We're working on the chronic absenteeism and we are committed to and investing in accelerated learning. That concludes my presentation and I'm open for any questions.
Ms. Dowers?
Yes, thank you. It feels super tense and my heart's down a little bit. But I want you to, if you can clarify the difference between the state assessment performance for eighth grader, it looks like it's very different than in the course, the what's being used to measure their performance. Because when I see 12% for our eighth graders passing the state assessment, but I see 20% of our eighth graders passing in the review course. Is that a big difference in what they're assessing?
Say that again.
I'm sorry.
And the first is high school.
For eighth grade, when I see algebra, when I see algebra one, I'm thinking that's correct.
In that first year, it was. And then we switched, we did a systematic change. And then they moved to algebra. So I'm sorry, they moved to eighth grade.
So eighth grade math, state assessment, is that algebra one?
No.
Okay, thank you. Because I know it's.
In the course exams, it's algebra. And then the five to eight exams are what we call kind of state assessment error test. What's the difference? They take one of the other?
Yes, thank you.
Rossi?
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. First, whatever we did for the seventh graders for ELA in 2019, we need to do everybody. That was, the graph was crazy. They went from like here to there in 2019, which I thought was super impressive. So thanks for sharing the data and being transparent with us so that it's all out there now. I am encouraged that our attendance rate is like pretty close to state average and much higher than other urban areas. I do, I do feel, I have some concerns. We have talked about our workforce about some of the protocols though and where we're heading in the city with COVID-19. I do wonder if some of these things are not going to be able to stay. So thinking more creatively about what we learned last year. I know you all are. I just feel the need to constantly say this. The numbers are alarming. And while I agree with you in many things, but I think with everybody up here, that we want our kids in school. I just think it's also important to note that while I believe it's good to have your kids in school, I mean, the data shows that high schools seem fitted better. But I think a lot of the reason that our students are not only disproportionately affected by the pandemic, everything in society, is because of just how they've been systemically held back their entire lives. And so, you know, I think it is, there is a power in being in school, but I think we can educate them to outside of school. But a lot of it is out of our control. I just kind of always feel the need to put that out there. We can't solve all of society's zil, but we are doing the damn best that we can. And I am proud of that. So, but I do, I do have concerns about where we are headed with this disease in the fall. And I'm hoping we can plan and mitigate these numbers so that they don't happen again. Not to be a downer, but I think it's important to have that out there.
Thank you.
I mean, pandemic.
Kind of in response to that, I mean, we have, we mandated a mask mandate in our district. And somebody threw this out anecdotally, you know, regarding to, you know, Lebanon School District, because they're out. They're out. They have no mask mandate. But it's, they were under that, what, the new policy that we, or the new protocol that we have that you mentioned? Where was it? That students.
Asymptomatic students.
Asymptomatic students who were masked, but were in close contact can stay in school. Well, if that was, if they were mandated, a mass mandated district, it would have gone to less than 10 kids in quarantine in Lebanon. So what we did is going to help this and, and, you know, for us for making that decision.
I think we're going to need more though. Let me compare Lebanon does to Accurately. I agree with you. I think it's rated as a mask.
I said anecdotally. But yeah, we'll need more, but.
Just both.
Just to put things on the absenteeism, which is now also rated and measured as part of our overall status with the, with the state, because it's still part of how they rate us and what have you. You're saying that our absenteeism is better than the other urban seven or whatever.
Average, but I thought, you only have the average. I don't know each individual district, urban district. But they gave us the average, so we're better than average for that urban.
So that cohort of, of the eight, we're doing better than the average of the other, of the eight, okay. Question is, over how many years?
This report is specifically for the pandemic. And that number is for the year of the pandemic specifically.
That being the case, it would be great, since these are recorded, now there's like a year that's not because it kind of gave up the report card. So I think it would be interesting to look at the longer term of our absentee, our chronic absenteeism in comparison to the other seven or whatever it is, because I'm going to probably say this was a statistic in part that we use to decide to make transportation free, if I recall, because that got kids here. And that was, that was part of it. And this is another, as far as I'm concerned, the nail on the top of the metro plan, because if this is decreasing our attendance, then we're in deep deep trouble. And so our kids, if they're trying to accelerate learning, we can't get it there. So I would like to see if we can, whoever has that kind of data on, it'd be interesting to make that comparison a little bit further back. Thanks.
Ms. Dowers, then Mr. Ben.
I think it goes with what former boards were saying. Is it possible to pull out of elementary and high school? And you're probably going to have to do that just to follow what you're asking anyway. Because I think that would be.
We would, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ben. I'll be real, we just want to say thank you, and I agree with your presentation. I'm glad it will be, so that the data can become a plan. We talked about this a lot, you know, budgeting what our plan is. I still think it's the right plan. I'm excited to execute it.
Yeah, I just say the same thing. I don't think there's any surprises if we expect a lot of this. And, you know, I am now even more excited that we did summer scholars. And the question is, are, did I hear that we have officially planned to do it also?
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
And I think that was mentioned in one meeting, but I don't think we can say it enough. We didn't just say, all right, you're caught up, keep moving. Like that's still added, there's tons of things happening.
We could spend $5 million in S for unfinished learning.
Yeah.
I believe 15 million goes to summer scholars.
Yes. And I will reiterate how many people said, we're not CPS families. Is there a way we can sign up for that? I thought that was a fascinating thing when that was getting really publicized. So thank you for identifying that, creating solutions to at least do what we can to help continue to close that gap. All right.
Last point, does it follow what you just said? Because of the numbers, about 11,000 to 15,000 kids came to school? We don't know how many of those, well, probably less than a lot of our high schools, I'm thinking, is. So anyway, the market that's better, I mean, because I know it's really more, was more a social-emotional line, not a lot focused on academia.
You did well.
I know you did well, but I know that it was. Is there a way to gauge progress from there?
Because I thought the two-week cycle assessments are important, because it'll tell us exactly where the kids are doing and what they have retained, and also the map so we can compare it. But I'm more interested in that two-week type of assessment, because they got it only three times a year.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will continue to monitor that map.
I know we have to stop, but it would be great, since we have that particular cohort of who is here for summer scholars, to actually kind of follow them versus the cohort. And I would still say, one of my concerns was many of the children that needed to be here the most were not necessarily here. And so it was, you know, and part of this, you know, procedure and PR and everything else. But I think it would be an interesting cohort to follow.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right.
That was.
Okay, with an assignment, and then we will, I'll take the motion in just a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I have another assignment?
What? What assignment is that?
Oh.
I'm going to make an assignment. We're in a couple of weeks, I think it's on. We made assignments that count.
I was told I couldn't, but go ahead.
We were told you.
You're one of the ones too, yes. I don't lie to you. I don't lie to you.
Well, it's going to your committee, so.
It's all about policy.
It's all about policy. Well, I would like to make an assignment to the policy committee to review the policy around COVID quarantines. And also in that same assignment, to have the administration present the protocols regarding COVID diagnoses and quarantine, that there seems to be varying, by private doctors and our advisors at the Health Department, there seems to be varying interpretations of CDC guidelines. So for us to know, for the board to know exactly what our protocols are, it alleviates a lot of confusion. Not to change them, I mean, not necessarily change them, just to know what they are. So I think the board will allow me to make that assignment. I would rather do that now than wait until our next meeting.
Great. Okay. Could I get a motion to recess to executive session for the topic of employment of a public official? So.
Seven.
Very short, please call the roll.
Mrs. Day.
At.
At. Ms. Boston.
At.
Ms. Dowers.
Yes.
Mr. Lenny.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Yes. Please, yes. Great. Thank you, everybody.